Board to order tonight. And I guess we'll first go through. Ms. Moss, would you like to do the roll call?
Sure.
Introduce the new members. I know we have some.
So, so we had three members from my previous planning board advisory board. We had three members to come off. And so we've added an additional three members to fill in those spots. And so I guess if you all could, I give my introduction first. Everybody knows who I am. I'm Sherri Moss, Town and Nashville Planning Director. And so if we'll start with Mr. Strickland. Do you want to introduce yourself? Or if you want to give any other extra?
That's me. Been here all my life.
Dennis Evans, I'm the ETJ representative.
I'm Bill Long, been on board for five years now.
I'm Ann Collier, been on the planning board for a long time. Glad to see new people.
I'm Wayne Sears.
Eddie Thomas.
Okay.
Brand new.
Well, welcome. I appreciate you all. And thank you for your service and serving on the planning board. And we're gonna have some fun. All right, so now we will swear, get our new members sworn in.
Swearing in of the new members. And I'm excited to see how this board works now. I think it'll be really good to do this.
And Sean is gonna come up. You got those papers? And I guess if you three, how many was it, three? You all want to sign?
Just have. Oh, yeah, here we go.
You need to tell the bow.
You need to ring a bell.
I'll come here.
Here, press it down the window. Or you want to send back?
All right, we can have me and everybody say, no, I'm gonna put my 14.
Eddie Thomas.
Is that Ross Strickland?
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
We don't care about.
The laws of the Constitution.
Inconsistent.
How inconsistent?
Fair will.
Fair will.
And then I will favorably perform.
And then I will favorably perform.
As a member.
And as a member.
As a planning board in Town Nashville.
As a planning board in Town Nashville.
I wish I'm now about to.
About to.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Skills.
Skills.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome.
And if you all could sign, sign those. And I will get those when the meeting is over.
So our next item on our agenda is the election of officers. And I guess I'll still handle that while being chair. And we can then turn it over to the newly elected. I did talk with Sherri earlier this week. My husband and I are building a house that will be outside of the Nashville limit. So I would prefer not to continue on as chair. I will just say that because I feel like I would be leaving mid sometime this year. And I don't want to leave this board in a position of not having a chair. So I would open up the, open up the slate for nominations for the office of chairman. We'll do that first and then a vice chairman after that.
And I will let the record know that we do have a quorum.
No, thank you.
And members present, we have Eddie Thomas, Wayne Sears, Ann Collier, Bill Long, Dennis Evans, and Ross Strickland.
Okay, are there any nominations for the office of chairman for this board?
I'd like to nominate Bill Long for chair. I'll nominate Wayne Sears.
So do we have two nominations or one? Any other nominations? All right. Hearing none, I will enter. All those in favor of Bill Long as chair, please signify by the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Same.
Oh, does he take over now, I guess?
Well, we have to have a vice chair.
Vice chair, let me finish that then, okay. So now we'll open up the floor for nominations for the office or the position of vice chairman of this board.
I nominate Wayne Sears.
Wayne Sears nominated. Any other nominations for that? Hearing none, we'll call it out. All those in favor of Wayne Sears as vice chair, signify by the same eye. Opposed, like sign. So thank you very much. Wasn't trying to, I'll put you all on the spot.
You didn't post it at all.
Um, I guess I'll turn.
All right, so you want me to do the rest?
Take on the meeting, yes, sir.
All right, so we have the minutes from November 30th meeting. Which are in your packet. Does, do the past members allow to vote on the minutes that weren't part of their meeting?
They can, they can vote.
Okay, all right, good. Because if not, well, no, because it's not enough, it's not a quorum.
They can vote.
All right, so any questions about the minutes? If not, we're gonna get a motion.
Make the motion in seconds, will you?
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. So here we have. That's the only minutes we had? We did, we got the other ones, we got.
We did other ones at the last couple of minutes.
All right, so we have a schedule on our pamphlet with the changes of the year on the, on the, where the wrong one started.
Did we do the bylaws? Bylaws on page four?
The schedule's next to my list.
Okay, well, okay. So we probably go through the schedule.
Hold on, I'm sorry, I'm in a wrong meeting. It's probably on two meetings. Let me put them on the way. Now, now I'm in the right place. Yes, I'm sorry, amendment approval of the Nashville Planning Board bylaws, sorry.
So the thing, the only revision in here was on page four. And that was changing the meeting date on the, at 6:00 PM. Changing the time to 6:00 PM and the date to Tuesdays. And it'd be the last Tuesday before the first town council meeting of each month. And then also in section five, the voting. Close to the end, let's see, the last, the last sentence. He slash she, they only exercise when the board has a tabo. And I just see that in case it was a he or she. As chair. And that's the only change that I had in that.
So if somebody's nice with those changes, we can get a.
Set, how many that we approve? Bylaws, Nashville Planning Board bylaws as changed.
So, okay, we can have them first and second, any further discussion about the bylaws? Any changes?
Who's second, Mrs. Sears?
Ann.
Ann, I'm second, Wayne from her.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. All right, so we're moving on to. That was on the schedule, sorry. Now we're on the schedule. All right, so the schedule in your packet. Page six showing the dates that may or may not be in play. Which is the motion that approval for the 23 schedule is written.
I second.
First, we got a second. Thoughts or questions? Not? All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, okay, passes. Next item is. Does you want to read the procedure for both public hearings?
Yes. So I'm briefly gonna go over the procedure for our planning board hearing, public hearing for tonight. And here, per June Statute 160D dash 601, before adopting, amending, or repealing any ordinance or development regulation, a public hearing is required. Staff will not provide a recommendation on denial or approval of the case until after the public hearing is closed. So the procedure for the public hearing, the chairperson of the planning board calls the meeting to order introduces each public hearing matter on the agenda. The planning board chairperson will explain the purpose of the public hearing. The public hearing will be open and preliminary matters are addressed. The planning board requests comments, that comments not be repetitive or, and where possible, that a spokesperson is designated to present the view of a large group. Each person who speaks must clearly state his, his or her name and address for the record. Planning staff is called on to present the ordinance amendment, followed by others who wish to speak in support and or opposition of this item. Members of the planning board may pose questions to planning staff and the speakers who spoke in support and or opposition of this item. After everyone has had a chance to speak, the chairperson will give planning staff an opportunity to respond to public comments. The planning board chair closes the public, I'm sorry, closes the period for public discussion. The planning board deliberates. In the course of the deliberation, the members of the planning board may ask questions to planning staff or others who have spoken. Beyond that, additional comments from the floor will be admitted only at the discretion of the planning board chairperson. The planning board, the public hearing is then closed and planning staff may present its recommendation to the planning board at this time. A motion and a second is then made by the planning board. If necessary, further discussion will take place. A vote is conducted to approve or deny the recommendation of the ordinance amended. The planning board will make this written recommendation to the town council that staff will prepare. And this will go before the town council on February 7th, 2023, which is next Tuesday. And the town council meeting will take place at seven o'clock in this same room.
So I'm a point of clarification because we're having a meeting in the first town on the same night. I'll make sure that people in this room understand that we're gonna have another sign up after this meeting, the next meeting.
Yes, so right now, this is the public hearing for the actual rezoning. And once the planning board meeting is over, then we will proceed with the board of adjustment meeting.
Okay, and they got one, they signed it, okay, all right, make sure it's clear. Okay, so we're on the new business? Which is the public hearing, RZ 2023-01. Request by Landen Forest Equity LLC to rezone approximately 2.51 acres out of 23.83 acres tract from A1 Agricultural District to B1 Highway Business District, located in the corner of Oak Level Road and East Spring Oak Road, Nash County Parcel ID 032540. And the pin number is 380111761072 in the town of Nashville ETJ jurisdiction from A1 to B1 District per Division 9 of the Nashville zoning ordinance. So we have a request in our packets for this property. Sherri, do we need to, something from you, or do we just need to?
Yes, I can briefly, I can briefly go through and explain everything. So as I have here, if everyone can see this, I briefly go through this. So this is a rezoning for the parcel as stated. Res zoning property from A1 to B1. And within a particular area, so to the, let me show you the property. So this is the property here. And according to our, to the uses around, to the north, the zoning is A1, which is agriculture. South is A1 Agriculture and B1 Highway Business. To the east, you have Nash County zoning, which is R30. And it consists of resident, residential commercial use. And that commercial use there is the restaurant, which is Oak Level Cafe. And to the west, you have agricultural and you have residential uses there. And also, again, to the north, you have agricultural use and residential use. And to the south, you have commercial, commercial and the business, well, commercial uses. You have Harper's Nursery, which is across the street. And diagonally across from the petition property, you have Langley Automotive, which is zoned, which is on B1 in this little pink area here. And so looking at the Nashville zoning code, the A1 district is defined as one to provide land for future development while permitting continued agriculture use until such time that development is appropriate. It is assumed that approved wells and septic tanks will be utilized until such time as municipal water and store is available. This district is situated primarily in the town's extra territory jurisdiction, which is also known as ETJ. And the proposed zoning, the B1 description of this district is defined as certain commercial areas which provide a wide selection of convenience and comparison shopping outlets, furniture showrooms, and for personal care services in an orderly arrangement of retail facilities, parking, and other amenities. The district is customarily located at the intersection of one or more highways or along thoroughfares. This district may also provide retailing and personal services for the benefit of residents in nearby areas and non-residents. Included are also certain functions such as warehousing that are compatible with the primary uses. And according to the Nashville comprehensive, the 2021 Nashville Comprehensive Plan, currently the petition or subject property is existing low-density residential. And residential uses including detached, single-family homes and manufactured homes, agricultural, forestry parks, places of worship, schools, or similar rural uses shall be allowed. And the proposed use is neighborhood, proposed neighborhood services. That is a proposed change that would be changed on the actual future land use map. So with the proposed neighborhood services, the land use classification includes commercial, office, and institutional services that are primarily located designed to serve the town's citizens. Where such development has an established pattern, other lands that represent a logical extension of neighborhood services use are also included. So the type of classification generally situated from highway interchanges and functions as a buffer between highway services or industrial uses with residential services. So this neighborhood services is not quite as a high use like your regular highway commercial. But these are the services that actually could meet the needs of the town's citizens. So below is a comparison chart of your zoning map and your future land use map as I explained before. So currently here, you have your agriculture use of the subject property, followed by this area here that I'm hovering over, that's agriculture. And this gray area is your county zoning, which means this is in the county's jurisdiction. Then you have B1, which is diagonally across from the subject property, which is B1. And agriculture is adjacent to it. And the comparison with the future land use map, the subject property is here. And this is classified right now as low-density residential. And with surrounding areas of medium-density residential. But even though they're low, the future land use map classified these as residential, but they are also commercial uses within these land use classifications. And photos of the subject and nearby properties. And we always make sure that we take pictures, just, this is proof that, you know, so citizens can know what is going on. So other than receiving letters, we also take, post a sign on a property and take pictures, which is a requirement. So you have the nearby property owners and you have the nursery shown there, residential properties, and other rural areas. And this is just a Google Earth pro photo showing the overview, a clear view of it. And in, in consideration of this request, the planning board is asked to review the rezoning request and make recommendation to the town council. So upon making this recommendation, the planning board should consider the following factors. And here are the four factors. Is the proposal in accordance with the land use plan and sound principles? Is there a convincing demonstration that all uses permitted under the proposed district classification or proposed tax amendment would be in general, in the general public interest and do not merely in the interest of an individual or small group? Is there a convincing demonstration that all uses permitted under the proposed district classification would be appropriate in the area? And also is there a convincing demonstration that the character of the neighborhood would not be materially adversely affected by any permitted, by any use permitted in the proposed change? And also, so the findings of facts and order or staff comments based on this case according to regulations from our Code of Ordinances. So Landen Forest Equity is applicant requesting to rezone a total of 2.51 acres at the above said location. The rezoning application was received on December 7th, 2022. Public hearing notice letters were mailed out to approximately 18 property owners within a 500-foot radius on January 17th, 2023. Public hearing notice was posted on the town's website on January 19th. Public notice was also posted at town hall, the library, and parks and recreation facilities. The rezoning sign was posted on the property on January 19th, 2023, and photos were taken. Legal notice was advertised in the graphic on January 19th and January 26th prior to tonight's meeting. The subject property is not located within a flood plain. The subject property, however, is located within the North Carolina EQ Water Supply Watershed. The planning board's recommendation of this item will go before the town council's regular meeting on Tuesday, February 7th, 2023, as stated before. And there are attachments after this staff report. So you have the rezoning application that was filled, completed and signed by both, well, completed by the applicant but also signed by the applicant and the property owner. The property owner is Ronnie Burnett of 2246 Oak Level Road. And here, here's the rezoning application, the statement of justification describing that although not residential in nature, the rezoning to B1 of just a two-acre site would allow for a business that would complement future residential growth in the area. As presented, a proposed small retail operation would be cited on the parcel to help anchor future development. Number two, asked to explain how the rezoning request will update the existing ordinance if any, if there is any inconsistency with the Town of Nashville Comprehensive Plan, is only ordinance or any other official plan that is applicable. The proposed rezoning to B1, what the applicant states that the proposed rezoning to B1 would be in keeping with a neighborhood services designation which promotes uses that serve the surrounding communities and neighborhoods. The proposed site is just south of already classified properties of the same designation on the future land use plan. Also, number three, explain why the rezoning request would be appropriate, beneficial, and in the general public interest of the area sought to be rezoned. The applicant states that services such as small retail can be complementary to the residential neighborhoods and be, and be more convenient access to goods that some residents may otherwise have to travel further away to obtain. Number four, explain whether rezoning request would adversely affect adjoining property owners and alter the character of the area. A neighborhood retail store would not adversely affect property or the safety of those around it. A small site such as this would be complementary to current and future residential growth. And lastly, five, briefly explain the accessibility and impact of adequate public facilities, services, fire and safety, infrastructure parks, and recreation stormwater drainage and topography that is currently available at the subject property. The applicant states that the site is located on two state maintained roads with connections to other thoroughfares. The proposed use when adopting all town and state regulations will not be an adverse impact on the current resources and infrastructure. And the application, as you see, is signed by both Mr. Barnes from Landen Forest Equity LLC and the actual property owner, Ronnie Burnett, as shown there. And you also have your meets and bounds as a requirement for the application. And you have the zoning exhibit or portion of that property showing the 2.51 acre tract. And then you have a preliminary site plan showing a proposed structure with parking and stormwater management area, followed by the adjacent, I'm sorry, the property owners within 500 feet from the subject property as required. And you also have the area dimensional requirements. And this shows the dimensional requirements from. So if a building is constructed there, it would have to meet all the requirements on, on this table here. And as well as if they're trying to do any type of minor subdivision, it has to meet the lot size requirement for that appropriate zoning district. You then have your description of districts showing the A1 and the B1, which I explained earlier in the staff report. Followed by the table of permitted uses, and I'm not gonna read all of those. And you have those in your packet. And finally, you have in your packet the consistency statement. And with the consistency statement, you have three options. Option one, you can approve as is with no changes or ordinance to the plan. Option two is given, is a statement to deny. And option, if it's not consistent. And option three is not consistent, but you can add your conditions. And we also have the applicant here.
Okay, one, one quick question about the ETJ. On page nine. Is Langley Automotive in ETJ of Nashville or is it in Nashville?
Okay.
Because I couldn't tell whether or not.
Yes, so all of this, so here.
So that corner goes all the way.
Yes, so everything in color is in the town's, I mean, in the ETJ. So and everything in this gray area, so just like on the other side of Langley Automotive, all that is in the county. So this, all of these properties here are just the edge of the ETJ.
So we have the public first?
Yes.
All right. So get a motion to open up the public comment section?
Seven.
So, okay, all those in favor, say aye. All right, so public, we have two people from the public to speak. Get Jason Mizell to speak first from the Timmings Group.
Good evening, can anybody hear me? My name is Jason Mizell, Timmings Group, out of our Elsby City Office, here on behalf of Landen Forest Equity, who is the applicant this evening. Ms. Moss has done a very concise report for you guys. As far as what else I can offer beyond her report, the applicant does intend to build a retail store there. Provisions have been made for the size of the lot to make sure that it can be for the stormwater runoff detention time that will be required there. We do have some power lines that run through that part of the property as well that have to be worked around. So that's why the site is two and a half acres. Normally, one of these would probably sit on about an acre and a half to two acres. The site is directly across from another B1 zone property. So fairly consistent with what is happening at that intersection today. Land use is probably the only thing of consideration on the land use. Land use is probably the only thing of consideration on the land use plan in that we are not adjacent to a neighborhood services, but we are not very far to the south of what you've got designated in your land use plan. So that would require an amendment by council to adopt. Short of that, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys may have in regards to the site-specific elements that the applicant proposed or any additional concerns that you may have in regards to the zoning.
So I have a question for Sherri. So, the orange is neighborhood services?
Yes.
And what is that currently?
Neighborhood services, just, just like your services that has like retail, it's like a lower level than your highway business, whereas they cater to your neighborhood, not as much, not as a big impact like it would.
That's different than B1?
Yes, yes.
And what's currently in that location?
Where?
The orange. Because you both referenced it, I'll make sure I understand where we are.
Is that off of, since, or? Camwell and back in the subdivision?
So that's Freedom Electric and?
So access to the, to the neighborhood services is from which road? From the main, East, Washington Street, I guess?
That would be Eastern Avenue.
Eastern Avenue, I was getting those confused.
That's Camwell.
And your neighborhood services also, it includes those, like most of your office and institutional uses as well, and some commercial.
So, this, this request though is different than, than neighborhood services as for B1?
Well, you've got, you've got land use and you've got zoning.
Right. Right, and, and so looking at these two maps, so looking, so you, like I said before, you have on your land use map, it shows like our residential, but it's, it's already inconsistent with your zoning map because you already have commercial uses in this area. So just like in any other petitions, I know that's not relevant to this case, but in other areas, that's why you have three options in your consistency statement, whereas in this case, it's not, it's not consistent anyway, but you still have surrounding areas with mixed uses. That includes mixed uses.
But were they grandfathered in as ETJ expanded? Or was zoning changed?
That, so what, I mean.
So we say there's businesses there.
Yes, there's businesses already existing there.
But did they exist in the sense of ETJ expanded and they were grandfathered in as a business? Or was zoning changed to allow them to be a business there?
They may have already been grandfathered in, that was before my time.
And they've been there quite a while.
And they've been there quite a while.
And on its face, this is in conflict with future land use plan.
Right. So, and the future land use map was recently done, but it didn't reflect those changes. And just remember that the future land use map is nothing that's in concrete. It can, it can.
But it is a guide.
It is a guide, yes.
I think a lot of your, any other groups members? Well, this, 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 any other questions for Mr. Mizell? Anything else you want to add?
I'll be here if anybody thinks of anything. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Alright, we have one other person, Ms. Kathy Morse. How you doing?
I'm good. I am Kathy Morse, and I do own property on the corner, well, near the corner of Old Spring Hoke Road and Oak Level Road. So I live in Birchwood, but I have property on Old Spring Hoke Road, near Oak Level Road. I have a question, if I can ask anyone a question, is that okay? Where do you want to put your retail store? On Oak Level Road facing or on Spring Hoke?
Sherri, can you bring that site plan back up?
Which?
So it's on the north side of the intersection. It's, it's right on the corner.
So you're facing Old Spring Hoke Road?
The store, yeah, the store is facing Oak Level Road.
You have an entrance and an exit on both roads?
Yes, ma'am.
It's way over on the corner.
And, and just for clarification, if this rezoning gets approved, it will have to, have to go before another committee, which is the technical review committee for development review.
And then town council?
No, oh, yes, it does, it does, I'm sorry, it does, it does.
So I just want to say that I've been confronted by people I know and people I don't know to sell my property, which is, if you'll go down a little bit more, you can see my little acre. Oh, it's not on that map. It's not showing on that map. But people want to buy it and sell it all the time. And I say no.
Are you on this side?
Without second, right there. That looks like me right there.
Can you back up a little, Kathy?
Behind a little cafe.
Or the property beside the cafe?
Behind it.
Behind it.
On the Spring Hoke Road. Okay, so I've been confronted by people that I don't know, and they want to, they ask me to sell them my property, or may they rent my property? And I always don't even have a second thought. Out of total respect for my neighbors, I say no. I do not want to do to them what I do not want done to me. So I do not ever intend to sell it, not for a long, long time. It, I feel like this retail store may be a Dollar General and I don't know, is it?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
It is a Dollar General, okay. So I just did some history, I've done a lot of research. History of Dollar General stores, they were built in an area where there were no stores from miles away. And they were caught, they were built in an area called a food desert because there were no food in Good Wild. But now they have just popped up every single place you look. It just seems to me Dollar General does not meet the criteria to be in this community. There are already two grocery stores less than two miles away. Piggly Wiggly, Food Line, and you got Walmart. You got L&Ls, that were L&Ls, I don't know what they are now. And then you could go the other way and go to Sheetz and another store. So we're not far from anything. So also Dollar Generals, are you going to have a regular Dollar General? Or are you going to go to that extra?
This would be the, the regular without the market?
Without the market, okay. And again, this Dollar General will sell processed foods and frozen foods, not fresh vegetables. So people will still need to go to those grocery stores because those are not healthy. We already have plenty of grocery stores and little stores that people can buy the non-healthy foods and paper goods and things such as that. I have a lot to say. So the prices may seem low at a Dollar General, but actually, I've learned all this on YouTube, eating from Dollar General itself. They have a small quantity, so you're not paying very much for something. But you go to Walmart or Sam's Club, you're going to get a lot, but the unit price is what matters. People are paying more at Dollar General for things instead of at the other stores. So they really think they're getting a deal, but they're really not. And, but sometimes they probably do have deals, certain things. Alright, so this is getting down to the meat of it. There are already Dollar General stores in quite close proximity to the Old Spring Hoke Road with the Nashville address. One is at Sandy Cross, and the other one's on Washington Street, and there's one in Rocky Mount. I mean, listen, the one on Washington Street from that corner is 1.7 miles. That's all you have to go, that's not, that's not very far. And it's 4.9 miles if you go into Sandy Cross. And then if you go to the one at Little Eastenberg, that's 3.4 miles. So you've got three Dollar General stores from that location, less than five miles away. I also went to the website of Dollar General. As of January the 20th, there are four job openings at the Washington Street store. There are four at the Sandy Cross store. And I continued to look, there are 33 job openings in Rocky Mount, all on the Nash County side. There are four job openings in Castaia. There are eight job openings in Spring Hoke. There are four job openings in Charlsburg, four in Bailey, and there are eight job openings in Middletown. That is about 70 job openings in Nash County at Dollar Generals, just right there. So you think about it, how will there even be enough people to work at a new store and have it run properly? The first thing I look at when I go to a store is parking lot. And I feel like the parking lot in this store will be neglected because they won't have enough people to go outside and clean it up. So it's not going to be pretty. And I also called the town of Nashville about Nashville police. They had on the website, there were four police officers, but I'm thankful, three of them filled, they have one open as of last week. I do not want our Nashville police to be strained and spread too thin. So I want to make sure that that area is, would be safe. Also, Dollar General stores are put up very quickly. Website itself says 65 to 70 days to build a store. They usually have brick fronts and tin sites. Will this one be like that?
Yeah, it will meet whatever architectural requirements are required by the town.
Okay, so probably like the rest of them are in Nash County. So the older Dollar General stores have usually very little renovation to them, and then the parking lot gets looking old. And these buildings look cheap because they are cheap. I have not seen one renovated. I have seen one empty on my way out of town through Castaia, and they built another one right down the road. I'd hate to see an empty building there. But regardless of outside, will it be a betterment for the community? Because it doesn't seem it would beautify the area. And we got water and sewer to be concerned about. Where will it come from? How much will it cost? So I really think the land needs to be zoned as it is and not changed because the landscape will be changed forever. And then I started thinking, who wants to live across or beside a Dollar General? And I was thinking, if Mr. Burnett really wanted a Dollar General, then he would put it closer to his home. He has it as far away as he can. So he shifted it to the other side. So I don't want it either. I don't want it near my property. So he shifted it over, over to the corner. So if we all had a choice, I don't believe anyone would be raising their hand to say, please, put one beside me, I want one beside my home. So will rezoning property advance Nash County to be a better place to live and work? My answer is no. The community will not be beautified. It will not make it safer. And the reason I say it won't make it safer is because you're not going to have enough employees in the store, so you don't have enough eyes watching people shop, and you could have more crime. And I also don't think it's going to make the town community any healthier because you're not putting in fresh fruits and vegetables. And it will not make the rural community feel rural. It will not raise the value of our homes. So the field will be gone forever. The real beauty of a rural area, gone. No agriculture there, no field, no open country. So I feel like the land will not be zoned for business, and it should be stayed as it is. So I ask that you please protect the citizens who want to live in a rural area because they moved there, as it was rural. Remember about the possibility of crime. They can't keep their employees because their pay is low. Matter of fact, I looked on Dollar General, and their pay on average is around $10. The highest pay, it said, was around 15. So people are not staying there. Got to think about the noise of car doors, car mufflers, maybe twice when it's stoplight, and then one pulling out of store. You've got to shine in light, so that takes away the beauty of the stars that you can see. Is this what Nash County needs to represent the area? So we don't want anything to look really rundown in the years to come. We need something to help build the area up, not push it back down. I want to make sure that we keep Nash County a thriving county. I feel like it would possibly keep out more elite companies who may consider coming later on, way on down the road. But as for now, I'd really rather it stay agriculture. I found my information on youtube.com behind Dollar General's strategy to dominate rural America. I also found information on audacity.com. I also found information on scrapehero.com, which explains that North Carolina has the largest number, the fourth-largest state of Dollar Generals already. Texas is number one. And Texas is the larger state than we are. It also states the key to all-out expansion is a winning combination of cheap land, cheap construction, and cheap labor. That's what it says. And I just want to know, why would a business want to come if the people don't want it? Why would a business come to a community deep down their hearts? They're not going to welcome it with open arms. I don't think they care about the feelings of the people, they care about the money, not the welfare of people. But I have to say, even though I did not build my home on my property, which is directly across from this area, it is not out of the equation for a home to be built there. I do have three sons, and my husband, if we do not ever build on that property, one of them may. And they also said Dollar Generals was to help the people in rural areas because they don't have cars and they're in poor areas. But I believe most of the people who live around this area, even if they did walk, it'd be too dangerous to walk around that area. And there already have too many stores right there underneath, underneath them, with less than five miles away, a lot of stores. That's all I have to say about that.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Morse? Alright, so we get a motion to close the public forum? First, then second, all those in favor, say aye? Alright, so back to our meeting. So the go-to page, 31, which is the last page, it gives you the three options. To approve, to not approve, then to approve with changes based on our recommendations.
And if I may add, this is solely based on what information, well, of course, what you heard and the facts that we have in our ordinance, and that the B1 zoning district not only, or the land uses that you have there, if you take it, you know, consideration of that too, was in that area, and also that with the B1 zoning district, you have the table of permitted uses. It just doesn't reflect this one use, but everything within that B1 zoning district. So this is.
Sure, alone. Page seven, we'll attend the procedure. We'll have to close it here, we may ask questions of staff or from the people that have spoken.
Correct.
About a couple of questions of Mr. Mizell.
Hey, sir.
Hey, how are you, sir?
Good.
I am very pro-business, but let me ask this. I'm not as concerned as this more of the operational aspects or the profit margins and all of this type business. But I'd like you to explain to me, how does this fit into an area even though it's near the business zone and the more corporate area of Nashville? How does this fit into that neighborhood? I, I read the state here, you follow it. Help me understand how this fits in that area.
Well, just this fact. When looking at the land use classification in land use plan, and looking at what the neighborhood residential dictates to promote, it promotes that connectivity between these smaller businesses and the residential community. Seeing that the low-density area that's around this potentially could be some low-density residential communities, it would kind of fit into that cog, as you will, of supporting the future land use that would come with those types of developments.
Ms. Moss, and do I understand, once, once we change the zoning, anything in our, in our sheet and B1 is eligible to go there? So if they're financing or just. So if they're financing or logistical profiles of this shade is, it's eligible, whatever's in B one, correct?
Correct.
Including in business that may be twenty-four hours a day, correct?
Well, whatever business it is, a new business that's gonna be located on there, still has to go before development.
So if another neighborhood services-type institution, retail institution goes there, it could be a twenty-four hour business, could.
Well, if it's allowed in that zoning district, yes.
Alright, just things I need to think about, thanks.
And what I will add is that, you know, our applicant, if, if the zoning is not, if, if the zone, they're, they're, they're under contract, so if the zoning goes through, they will purchase it and proceed with their development, this is all they do. So, um, if the zoning doesn't get approved, then they'll go all to different sides.
Yep, do they have any twenty-four hour day storage?
That's right, they do not.
And even if, if the rec- if the recommendation is denied, it still goes, no matter which way it goes, it still goes before the town council.
Yes, ma'am.
They will make the final decision.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for you too, Mr. Mazzal. Um, is there another zoning where this type of project would fit within our, or is it, or the reason for picking this B one zone?
The B, I think B one is the only one where this fits. I think B two, you get into like shopping centers, things of that nature, larger development projects.
And B two, I believe, yeah, that's mostly like in your downtown or M S D district.
Or dense.
And I then have one more question, and probably for, for Ms. Morse. The other, on the land use plan or the land use map, the other, um, neighborhood services that are in close proximity, their access is not from, is any of their access from east Old Spring Hope or Oak Level Road?
Not that I'm aware of.
So they're all off of, um, eastern avenues?
Yes.
Yeah, Wainley, um, that's, that's Washington Street.
I mean, okay, I guess it's backwards on.
Yeah, Washington, things are right, it, uh, it'll be good. Uh, Wainley does have a driveway on the Old Spring Hope side, but it's not used, because of so many cars parked over there. Uh, question. As far as security, that being in E T J, does Nashville Police Department have jurisdiction now or the Sheriff's Department? Who would respond if there was a call?
It being in, uh, outside of town limits, primary responsibility is the Nash County Sheriff. But through mutual aid agreement, typically Nashville Police are summoned also.
I know it's fairly irrelevant, but, uh, as far as tax, County of Nashville receives no tax on this whatsoever, because it's not in the city limits.
Request from Mr. Mazzal? So I'm gonna read the three choices, so you can think about them, but, uh, the first one is, again, reading the choices, not, not the recommendation. Uh, I move to recommend approval, based upon review of inconsistency with the Town of Nashville Comprehensive Plan, zoning ordinance, and any other official plan that is applicable. Request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, Code of Ordinance, and adopted policies, because, and then you'll need to state why in your motion. Option two is, I move we recommend disapproval, based upon review of an inconsistency with the Town of Nashville Comprehensive Plan, zoning ordinance, and any other official plan that is applicable. Request is inconsistent with Nashville Comprehensive Plan, Code of Ordinance, and adopted policies, because, and once again, you need to state the reason. Or the third option is, I move we recommend approval, as amended, due to the inconsistencies of the Town of Nashville Comprehensive Plan, zoning ordinance, and any other official plan that is applicable, because, again, you need to state the reason, and then state the, um, amendment that has been added. And so those are your three choices. It, it just, uh, just, does there a fourth choice of, of delaying it or not?
That's to- that's totally a.
Okay, I mean, I just, I just want to make sure I know all the options.
And then, um, would you like staff recommendation now before?
Is that allowed? I hope it don't wait till the motion, if it's, if it's allowed, now, correct.
Okay, so, um, based on staff's, um, recommendation, I recommend that, uh, we approve this recommendation, and solely being in harmony with the other, you have commercial land uses already in that area, and the, um, land use map is already inconsistent with, um, the land uses that are already there. And it can be amended to, um, allow those changes.
So no point of clarification, the, the land use change was just the last twelve months, correct? We, we adopted the land use.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Chairman, are we allowed to have comments on ourselves, this, what's, other here is hard?
Yes, normally, they, normally after a motion, but we could definitely have, we'd have conversation also. Because if we need to amend something, and we definitely need to have a session about, if you're gonna, that's the way you're thinking or.
Do you want to go ahead and close?
Motion to close the public hearing again.
Oh, we did.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
We had a public hearing. We brought him back, 'cause, 'cause he spoke earlier, we don't call the public.
You're right.
Go ahead, we can bring them back at any point, any, anytime, we don't need to open back up.
Well, you have further discussion.
I just want to have discussion on that, so. I just, my thought is, is, you know, future land map, it's very new, we're already working on a conversation about changing something. And I, I have trouble with the thought being, well, it's already inconsistent, so let's make it further inconsistent. And I just don't know that I see the vision of what this could be, not what's planned, but once we make the zoning a set. And I have trouble thinking of a twenty-four hour service-type establishment, their recent house establishment there, considering how it currently sits, with residents, a nursery that is very prominent there, which means kind of agricultural within its own. Even though it's a business, the nursery is still kind of agricultural. And I just, I just don't have a vision with this big store-type situation there, in this rural-type area. Just, just my thoughts, and I just, again, it's, it's already in conflict with future land use development, we just agree with it.
I would add a little to what you said on that, is that, um, I did, as we were listening, look, was looking through all of the allowed uses in a B one, and that is a little concerning to me, because while this use in itself may provide the type of neighborhood service, I, you know, I'm not sh- I, I don't see that in all the uses that are permitted in a B one, um, or some that are not with the same intent as this may be. And I'm a little, I'm concerned to open up to a different zoning, to allow anything that's, you know, once we do that, then anything in that use could be, um, or in that zoning could be allowed there. And some of them contain things that are more, in my opinion, um, warehouse and, and manufacturing-type uses that are not small neighborhood services, you know? I'm just reading what's in our, our, um, zoning ordinance.
Sheet metal roofing shops, tile repair.
I mean, we have a little bit of that in there already, so it's, but obviously, if we didn't, if we didn't change the land use plan to reflect what may already be there, then, um, I think the intent was to, to keep, I guess it's low-density residential right now, it's gonna be.
Well, the use also includes that driving restaurants.
So there's a little bit of that there that is already inconsistent, so I understand that, but I don't think that was the intent behind where we were heading with the land use plan.
I agree.
Transportation terminals, freight, the freight and passengers, things like that, right?
Just for reference, for new view, I cannot make a motion, so just give someone to make a motion, we can, or we can discuss more.
Your progression for a motion for one of the recommendations, or a motion helpful, both under recommendations?
Well, we did a motion for, for the recommendation, so we can make a vote. Unless you want to further discuss it.
Make the motion. Or option two, go change the ordinance or plans?
I see.
Okay, we have a motion to option number two, which, um, Wayne, if you could add, um, the reason, um, based on the policy.
I don't think it's consistent with current uses, and it is contrary to our recently passed future use. This may be in the future use landmark.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any second, so be able to.
Yes.
This should do it, okay?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion about the motion and the reason? Give a chance to read it, so we all do it. Option two. Does he need to state, does he need to read that, Wayne? He's saying number two, is it, is it okay, is that enough?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All of us in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, motion denied. Okay. Going back to our agenda. Now, as for the next meeting, which is February twenty-eighth at six P M. And if I can get a motion to adjourn. Adjourn. Second. All of us in favor?